Thank you for attending our study session this afternoon on the Pasco School District Facilities Workshop. And we will broadcast this on PSC TV, which is charter cable, channel 191, and is also being recorded. That recording will also go onto the district's YouTube site. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Thornton to start off the presentation.
Thank you. President Lerman, I would just like to add that my father, who lives in Florida, appreciates that these are broadcast on the YouTube channel because now he gets to figure out what I do for a living, so it's helpful. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you -- that just sounds very hot mic -- for the opportunity to present to you this afternoon on an update with regards to the district's facilities. Mr. Nunnamaker and I will be presenting quite a bit of information to you this afternoon in the hopes that you -- we will be able to generate some questions and some ideas about what additional information you're going to need as we move through a series of workshops this spring. This is the first in a series of three we will be presenting to you over the course of this and the next two board meetings. We will be talking today specifically about some -- two issues that are in front of us right now for which we will need some direction from the board this spring. We'll also, to lay a foundation for that discussion, talk to you a little bit about our current enrollment numbers, capacity, and how we've been managing our student enrollment growth. Excuse me. At the second meeting, we will then move into a discussion about the district's capital facilities plan. The capital facilities plan is the plan that we have that has been approved by the board and also the City of Pasco that allows us to receive impact fees from the city. There's action that the city has to take regarding our update to that plan in April, and so board action here would be required in March. So we'll be talking about you -- we'll be talking about you -- we'll be talking about it with you at the next meeting. All of that funnels into the final presentation on facilities at the end of March, which will be a broader discussion about future bond planning. And that will be primarily Mr. Roberts with whatever support he needs from our departments. So that's the sequence with the focus today being getting you some preliminary groundwork information and then talking about two specific issues that we have before us right now. This chart, I don't think, is new to anyone. This is our district enrollment history since 2000. We always want to start with this reminder because, as you can see, our growth has been steady over time, and it is not forecast to stop. We're forecast to continue to grow over the next five years and beyond. We have increased almost 15% over the last five years and about doubled our enrollment since 2000. So obviously, that has created a need, which you're all also familiar with, the need for us to manage those new students and provide facilities and programs for those students. We have built nine new schools since 2000. Most recently, we added Kiri and McLintock STEM Elementary Schools. This year, we reopened Captain Gray as a K-6 school to be able to accommodate more students. We also have, from a program standpoint, the Delta High School facility, also the expanded IPAL program. We also have students who are attending programs such as college and the high school, but all of which they need some accommodation in our buildings at some point during the day. We have just about a little over one-third of our students in the district are -- receive instruction in portable classrooms. Portables are, by nature, designed to be temporary. And in Pasco, there is a certain -- there are certain percentage of portables that, in essence, for us are permanent facilities, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. Excuse me. We have 229 portable classrooms, a portable restroom at McLaughlin, a portable cafeteria at Mark Twain. That's allowed us to expand the capacity, the number of students we've been serving at Mark Twain. We have a portable IPAL lab at McLaughlin, which previously was a health fitness lab to help them expand their health fitness capabilities. We have six more portable classrooms on order, and I want to clarify, these are classrooms, six more on order for 2016, '17 to accommodate growth. Do you know where those are going? One portable, so two classrooms at Livingston and the remainder at Franklin, I believe. Keep in mind Franklin just opened last year. This gives you a snapshot of how our brick and mortar capacity looks compared to our current enrollments. Now, with the exception of New Horizons and Pasco High, which you'll see on the next screen, this does not count the portable classroom capacity that we have at our buildings. But one of the questions that I was asked recently by a board member was to look at what would it take for the district to replace all the portables and have every student housed in brick and mortar, because ideally, that's what we would want to do. And so these next two slides will give you an idea of what that would look like from a straight numbers standpoint. With the exception of one building at the elementary, we are heavily over-enrolled from a brick and mortar capacity at our elementary schools. And you can see at the secondary, with the exception of Stevens and Ochoa, we are over-enrolled at our secondary schools as well, especially at the high school level. There are no portable classrooms at Chihuahua right now, so that brick and mortar capacity is the capacity of Chihuahua as it stands right now. And so they are significantly over-enrolled as well. There are a number of ways to calculate a building's capacity. So like I said, this is just the brick and mortar based on a calculation of a particular class size. We do look at, and the district has looked at in the past, different measures of capacity for different purposes. So for example, the multi-track year-round task force when they were grappling with the question of what trigger points to recommend to the board for going to a multi-track year-round configuration in the district, they plugged some different factors into the capacity calculation and looked at what they called maximum squished capacity, i.e. how many students could you possibly get in a classroom and still expect them to learn, taking away art rooms, taking away computer labs, taking away rooms that would otherwise be designated for special purpose. They looked at another calculation, which they called something along the lines of optimal capacity, and that incorporated a certain number of portable classrooms into that calculation as well. So just to let you know, this truly is a snapshot based on a certain set of factors. And we will be doing some revisions to this work and calculation of our capacities this spring based on work that -- based on updated OSPI enrollment forecasts. We get our enrollment forecasts from several different sources. We are getting a new two-year -- every two years about, we get a demographic study from the Hovey Company. They're in the process of doing that for us right now as well. So when we come back to you later in March with recommendations regarding the bond, we will have updated enrollment growth forecasts and updated calculations around capacity numbers that factor in upcoming projects, that factor in some of the pending decisions that we're going to talk about tonight, and also, and probably most importantly, the updated class size targets from the state. The capacity that we had calculated prior -- in prior years did not account for what the new class size reduction targets are. And so in order to run those calculations, we need to plug in those numbers. Can I answer any questions about any of that so far?
Question on the enrollment now that you have at each of those schools. Does that include our specialized pre-K and our other pre-K?
No, it's K-12 only.
So there's even more than shown on that?
Correct.
So we have 229 portable classrooms, and then it looks like we're over-enrolled past brick and mortar by 2,000, 2,100 students. If we assume class size is a 20, which is pretty small, we'd need maybe 100 portables. What are the portables being used for other than housing students, and what percentage of our 230 portables are housing students?
So I don't have that specific information for you, Mr. Lerman, but I can get it. Where we have more portables that -- so part of what happened when we moved the middle school students to the elementary, that created more space at the middle level. Some of those buildings were able to breathe out a little bit where they had offices and closets or, you know, students in rooms that were not really appropriately sized for the type of instruction they were doing, they moved out. They kind of breathed out into those spaces. So where you probably see more student capacity for classrooms right now is at the middle level. The elementaries are still pretty tight. We have buildings here and there that might have one or two classrooms available for use, and then we have some buildings that have absolutely zero. Because what you also see, especially with the elementary enrollment, is that it varies building by building. We can't always predict exactly where the students are going to come in, and where we've seen our greatest growth has been on the west side most recently.
Do we move -- do we move portables each year?
We have not.
Are all of the portables at McLaughlin being used? There were just so many, and we reduced that school by a third. Are most of those being used, or do you know that?
I don't know that. But we can find out.
I know we repurposed some of them.
I think Mrs. Whitney knows.
Oh. So the portable classrooms at McLaughlin are being used to -- as classroom spaces. What McLaughlin chose to do internal to the building, they have three nice-sized science labs. So instead of having classrooms dedicated in those as classroom spaces, they use them as a rotation. So they're -- so if a teacher is doing an experiment, they can take the kids into an actual science lab, and they have each of the labs fitted differently based on the kind of science that the kids would be doing. The other thing they did is McLaughlin has some classrooms in its upper wings that are separated by accordion doors that make it very difficult during a regular instructional period. So they've used those as the class -- computer lab spaces, where in the past, the computer labs have been in the middle of the library. So McLaughlin has been able to use some of their classroom spaces internal to the building to give kids regular class lab or computer lab spaces and things like that. So they've really have embraced the concept of using the facility as an instructional tool, and I know that Dominique would be pleased to give anyone who's interested a tour of how they're doing that.
Right. And I know the one space was dedicated to the IPALS that they used to use for their students.
The fitness lab.
Right. Yeah, and that is housing the IPAL. Yes, that's housing IPAL.
To me, one of the differentiations is in the elementary school level, the portables, the kids are in there all day, is my understanding. In the middle school level, you may just go in for one period. So it's a much different experience where maybe that's acceptable, but having so many spend their whole day in the portal is a little bit different than just having one period in the portal, in the portable in middle school.
I think that's accurate. Kids are typically at the middle school and high school level, in and out during the day, depending on the schedule. Okay. Where we'd like to spend the bulk of our time this afternoon is focusing on two potential projects that might help with capacity, in that they might help add capacity to our inventory. Those are the topics for today. The topics will be the -- first would be the Pasco Senior Center and the potential of the district purchasing that facility for district use. The second topic is an update on the district's grant application for the class size reduction funds, or what we call the Superscap Grant. And Mr. Nunnamaker will go ahead and take over and start walking you through the senior center pieces.
Thank you, Sarah. The -- just for reference, the -- if you're not familiar with the Pasco -- City of Pasco Senior Center, the senior center is located about three blocks east of Pasco High School and Captain Gray Elementary School, right on 7th. So Pasco High and Captain Gray are on 10th. Had these three blocks, you'll be at the senior center. So located at 1315 North 7th Avenue, the senior center encompasses about 2.15 acres on the site. You'll notice to the east or to the right of the screen, there's a vacant lot. That would be included if there was a purchase of this property. Total's 19,290 square feet. You can almost see by the roof line of the building, the two different sections. The first one built in 1975. The second addition was 1994. And then again, the vacant lot to the east. This is what the existing floor plan of the senior center looks like. Primary adults in the building right now, so it's classified as a business occupancy. So that's where the code compliance lies. This is where a business. One thing I'd like to note on here is the senior center does have a full kitchen, a full functional kitchen. Right now, it serves meals on wheels for seniors throughout the community, and so it's functioning now as we speak. This is -- we took the information and the layout of the building to Meyer Engineering and had them put together some pricing and some kind of a rough floor plan of what a potential use of that facility would look like in a pre-K center. If you look at, there's a wide variety of potential sizes for classrooms. Keep in mind, they don't necessarily have to be configured that way. He was just trying to maximize how many classrooms could we get out of that building. And you can see with what they've drawn up here would be a total of 16. So as you look at this, keep in mind that depending on the configuration, if this were to be purchased and turned into a pre-K center, roughly what you have is about 35 square feet per pre-K student is what you're allowed. So depending on how we would put that together, that's how you would figure how many students we could fit into that building.
When you did that, where did the kitchen go and the bathrooms?
Let me roll back here. There we go. Okay, so I'll show you--
The bathroom's still right beside--
Kitchen's right here. Kitchen's in this area right here. And then keep in mind, when I say this, they don't have it drawn in, but the rooms have to have bathrooms in them for that age group, so that each room would have a bathroom in it. And then you'll note that the -- I want to say I can get it up here. There's a -- that's a gang restroom here that's current, and this is a gang restroom. Now, depending on how we configured the building, those would all have to be brought up to ADA standard. You know, all the new current code would have to be applied there. So it may look like that, it may not, just depending on how we feel the best use of that space would be. So suitability for the senior center and Pasco School District needs sets on a limited site for parking, playground, pickup and drop-off. It's located pretty much in central Pasco, but it's three miles to get to East Pasco and about eight miles to West Pasco. Roughly, if you drive it, it's about eight minutes to get to East Pasco, and again, 15 minutes to West Pasco. Classroom configuration, as we looked at, anywhere 12 to 16 roughly. Again, depends on the configuration that we would come up with. It would need office and meeting rooms could be included. Could be suitable for pre-K or special services pre-K. It would be very limited if we added older students to a facility like that, or excuse me, to a facility. Also suitable for parent education if we decided that it wasn't going to be a pre-K center and we decided to leave it as a business occupancy. And speaking with the City of Pasco, they'd allow us to use it for adult parent ed center would be an option or professional development use. The other option would be, and we'll look at some of these options a little bit more in-depth, would be to purchase the property and then lease it back to the City of Pasco. City of Pasco is going to be looking at placing a senior center more to the west side of Pasco, and of course, they're not going to do that until this -- until they resolve what they're going to do with the senior center in town. So there may be time for them to lease that back from us if we were to purchase it, giving us time to decide how we would want to use that facility if we purchased it. So we talked about options. So we kind of went to the city with this and said, what are our options for use for this facility? If we decided to purchase the senior center at this time and we wanted to put pre-K into it as is and without any renovations, you know, would we be able to do that? That was not permissible. Code enforcement said they would not allow that, that the life safety issues for the students would be too great and they would require us to upgrade the -- excuse me, upgrade the facility. The second question we came back with was, well, we're trying to conserve money and funds, so what if we renovated just half of the facility, brought it up to code? Would they allow us to go ahead in a limited basis, occupy half of the facility, and then at a later date, come back and finish the rest of the facility? Again, based on the size of the facility, they said they would not permit that either, that we would have to upgrade the whole facility before we could put pre-K students into there. So another option would be to purchase and renovate the existing building and site for student use. You can see kind of a breakdown of what the cost would look like there. Again, 12 to 16 classrooms. You see the purchase price, the remodel work that would need to be done, site work, security, and then furniture, and then infrastructure with our -- that would tie into our current district technology. In this, in this plan, there would be -- a playground would be added for the students. It would also have a pickup and drop-off area. And again, there would be the security. That'd be right at about $5 million. So another option would be to purchase and renovate and try to cut out some of the other exterior site work that would be done. With that, the purchase cost would be included, the remodel. We'd have to keep furniture intact for the students, but we would eliminate the security, the parent pickup and drop-off, and the playground. That would save roughly about $700,000 and put us at about $4.3 million. So another option we talked about earlier was purchase of that property for adult use. There would have to be some furniture and minor renovations probably done to the facility. We talked with the City of Pasco Code Enforcement, and they said they would leave this as a business occupancy so that we could put adults in into that location, again, but no students. If we were to purchase that property, do a little furniture and tech, you're looking at about $1.7 million. That would allow us, again, to use that facility for a period of time until another use was determined or funding was found. Another option would be, we talked about, was to purchase and hold the property and possibly lease that back to the City of Pasco. This would allow the district to plan for future needs and yet have the facility available to us. There'd be things that would need to be covered in a lease agreement, of course, which would be rental income, operations, utility costs, those kind of things we'd have to work out with the city. And then being able to determine how long the city is going to want to lease that until they have a site they would like to go to. There's been some discussions, but that would be undetermined at this time. And you can see for that, we would purchase the property at the 1.235 with tax, $1342, or $1,342,000. So on a senior center, our contingency period expires March the 15th. That means we have to have a decision at that time. Board direction then would need to be made prior to March 8th, and so that's right around the corner. So I think that's pretty close. Any discussion that we can have?
I would clarify just one point. We do have the property under contract right now. The board did previously authorize us--
Okay.
You can stay on. You did previously authorize us to make an offer on the property, which was accepted. So we do have it under contract, which is what the contingency period refers to right now, so.
So for the adult purposes, we're talking about education, that kind of thing? And so don't -- as we have it now with adult education, it's like English learners and things like that. Don't we have a -- for them to bring their kids and have -- so would that read into that that they couldn't bring their children, or would we still have some kind of daycare or whatever we have now?
Right now, it would just be for adults. The daycare wouldn't be correct.
Do we have a need for adult education in a separate facility? Because from what I understood, most of that goes on in the evenings, and so we have plenty of room at our area schools for that. Is that not true?
No. Right now, we do have adult parent ed centers in the -- and I believe it's Stevens right now, yeah.
Are they during the day or in the evenings?
I believe they're both, yeah.
Okay. Is there a need for a place to house adult education? Or is there room in the district to accommodate that?
I think when we were looking at this, the intent, when we were, as far as looking at that for the senior center, we wanted to exhaust all potential uses for that facility. Whether it was that was the specific right thing to do, we haven't discussed that.
Yeah, I think the primary need for -- to acquire the facility would be to look at classrooms. We wanted to show you what our options would be if we simply wanted to purchase the facility but not do a renovation. And I think the takeaway is that the only thing that we could use it for if we purchased it but did not renovate it would not include students, and that, and students are our primary needs. So I -- so the short -- that's a long answer to your question. I may think the short answer to your question is we're currently able to accommodate our adult education needs in the district.
So I think the important thing to understand here is when we started looking at this was when we were talking about early learning center or pre-K center and trying to identify property that would be located in an area that would serve the greatest population of our students, then this is one of the facilities we identified. As you know, one of our board priorities this year is-- As you know, one of our board priorities this year is a two and a half million dollar ask from the legislature, which is half of what this purchase and renovation cost would be. So there's things that we can do with this. Ideally, we could use it for classroom space, whether it's early learning. One of the things that we heard in our, in our community forums that we could possibly use this as a pre-K special ed facility and centralize all of the, the pre-K special ed students in one location, which I think is, those who are in attendance, at least those who provide that service, thought that would be beneficial, so. We're not limited to just doing pre-K such as E-CAP students here. We can use this. This is a facility that it's in a good location. And if we can get state assistance in funding this project, then, then it would be, it would be worthwhile because it would then take pressure off of some of our other facilities and that's, that's important. If we can bring some of those students that are in those facilities into this facility and free up space there for K6 classrooms, then that's, that's a benefit, so.
And I appreciate you mentioning that. We currently, just to let the board know, we currently in the district, I think when you heard the presentation on pre-K last month, excuse me, we have nine classrooms in the district that have special education pre-K and E-CAP pre-K currently. So if we were able to move them into a different facility and give, give the programs a home, so to speak, that would free up that space. In addition, we have staff that serves students such as the birth to three program. They're currently in a portable classroom at McGee. If they locate to a permanent home, then that frees up that classroom space as well.
So I think, I don't know how much further your presentation is going to go here, but I think one of the things that, that we've got to balance out. Of course, money from the legislature is, is really tight. They're trying to fund education, so they're watching every, every dollar they spend. So whether we can get it all this session, whether it's going to take a couple of sessions, it's, it's not clear if we can get that funding. We need space. I think that's pretty clear. And we get match money because of our, our property values. We do get some state match money if we build new. But it's not clear how much we'll get and when we'll get it. So this is one of the options that we as a board have been looking at to try and create more space with some assistance from, from the state in purchasing and renovating facilities like this, so.
And we need our kids more prepared for, to enter. Our kids are grossly unprepared to enter kindergarten across the district. So we've talked about lots of different options to help get our kids prepared for kindergarten so that they don't start behind every grade thereafter. We also talked about getting some data on kids that went to E-CAP and Head Start and kids that didn't go to E-CAP and Head Start and how they're performing and how well they were. And to me, it seems like this, this facility can be used for, I don't think we're going to use it for adult education. We're either going to use it for, for pre-K or for some of our special pre-K programs that already exist. So a new pre-K program or some, that's what I'm kind of hearing, maybe I'm wrong. But I would still like to know if, if these two Head Start and, and especially the, the, yes, do you want, what is the, the preschool that?
E-CAP?
E-CAP, yeah. I want, I want to make sure it's effective because I hate to dump a lot of money into this and find out that those kids are not even better prepared than they're, they're the kids that aren't going to preschool or are going to a preschool, at a daycare or whatever else. So I'd still like to see some data before March 8th on, on that to see if E-CAP is successful at getting our kids prepared for kindergarten.
Additional information that I'd be interested in, it sounds like this is really ideal for pre-K. And if we went down a direction of moving the nine classrooms that you were talking into, into here, that, those are state required preschool versus us providing buildings to run just E-CAP for additional kids that are at risk. But I would want to understand if moving our kids into there to make space in, in the elementaries for other students would reduce our, our, would reduce the number of unhoused students and impact our matching funds for future projects and how, how that would impact it?
Right now, I don't believe that, normally OSPI counts K through 12. So I don't know that the count, the student count on E-CAP or pre-K is going to count against the number of students that we have. What they're going to go by is classroom, classrooms and K-12 classrooms. Is that correct, Kim?
Even if they're E-CAP students that were required to serve because they have special needs by the states, those aren't counted towards our student count?
Now what the, what, and I'm working with OSPI on this right now. For the E-CAP, that's totally separate, for your special needs pre-K.
That's, yeah.
They do have a formula for that, but it's at a very, very, very reduced, reduced rate. And I've been dealing with OSPI right now. They're getting me those figures, so.
So that's the, I used the wrong term there. So are the nine district classrooms that we talked about moving, are they all special needs pre-K or is it a combo?
Number of comments, and I wanted to clarify one thing, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nunnamaker. I've heard some concern in the community that we're kicking out the seniors so that we can take over this for the school district. And that's not the case. The, the city has been wanting to, to change their senior center and they are looking at a place in west Pasco to build a new, is that correct? So we did not approach them and say, let's kick our seniors out of here. We want the space. They, they have been wanting to, to change this, or get rid of this facility or, and build a new community center for the seniors. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we didn't approach them to kick the seniors out and have them go somewhere else so we could have that facility. The, the city of Pasco, I had the opportunity to sit in one of the city council meetings where they discussed the needs for the seniors in the community. And when the, when the senior center was built quite a few years ago, what seniors' activity looked like at that time for senior center and the activities they had is a lot different than it is now. And the city is challenged with meeting those, the senior needs now, which is a lot of activity and a lot of growth there. And so what they're trying to do is they're trying to figure out a way they can better meet the seniors' needs. And with that, that means that they'll probably relocate and the senior center that they have in the future will look much different than what, what it looks like now. So they're looking at leaving the senior center and it became available for us to, to look at. Does that help?
Yep, yeah, and I think this is a great option. I just want to make sure we're distinguishing pre-K versus special ed pre-K. So these special ed students, we are already taking care of and we are required by law to take care of them. And when I met with the special ed pre-K teachers and administrators, this would be like a dream to them because they, the special ed students always seem to be moved to other schools. And I don't think it's necessarily intentional, but, but they, they always are kind of, that's how they feel at least. And, and this would be a dream because not only, we're not just talking about a couple of classrooms, but we're talking about speech therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. And to have this type of an area where they can all be housed together, that's much different than, than just a normal pre-K or E-CAP where we would be taking on additional students. And after looking at the numbers that we, that we were, were just presented, I have serious concerns about taking on additional students when nearly every school is dispersing at the seams. But having this facility for students that we already are taking care of and providing them a nice facility where they're centralized and it's a good central location with these therapists and special ed instructors where they can work together, that is ideal. And I'm definitely in favor of that, even with, and we don't have to worry about any legislative match. I think this is something that we're already needing to take care of in an improved way. And I would be in favor of that, for that purpose. Whereas if we're talking about just special, or just regular pre-K, E-CAP students that were taken on additionally, I don't think that would be wise, seeing all the things that were just presented. Additionally, my main question would be the longevity of the buildings. There are, the one part is 1974 and then 1975, and we're talking 25, 40 years. So I, what would the longevity of that be if we renovated it? That would be my main question about purchasing the building. With the extra lot, we can add more parking space or playground or whatever it is that we need to, to enhance the facility to meet our, the needs of our special ed early learners. And I'd love to see input from all those stakeholders, the teachers and therapists and helping design. I think this would be a fantastic, amazing thing that would free up space at our elementary schools for the neighborhood students, K6 students. And my last comment would be, as far as the parent education class, I did want to comment on that. You know, the, my understanding, there's a combination of during the day and evening classes, and they are essentially all full. And I just met a woman a couple of weeks ago. She goes to Stevens during the day for English classes, absolutely loves it. She wants more, she wishes they could have more classes. But we could easily add evening classes at the schools. Adding classes during the day would probably be difficult. Stevens, we saw, is the one that does have space during the day and that's probably why they have a class there. But I would like to see us expand evening classes for parent education. There's a great desire for that. There's a waiting list for these classes. There's always a waiting list. And there's people that are just dying to learn and they, they want to come for the English and the computer classes. So I'd like to see us address that as well, but probably not through this facility.
So I've got a question on evening classes. These evening classes that Dr. Richardson is talking about, these English and technology classes, is the district just providing the space or does the district actually provide the teachers an instruction for that?
Sounds like they, that the district provides the teachers and the instruction for that.
Well, we, we partner with CBC and we, they send us a teacher and we pay a very small fee for that teacher to come over. But we provide during the day, we have a teacher on campus. We also hire someone to do the computer. And then we provide the childcare. So those are.
Those are direct costs to the district that we pay for adult education. Title I funds. And do we spend all of our title I money? Okay, so I, so it's not, this title I money is federal money that we get? All right, so it's not like we're missing out, like we've got to reallocate it to adults when we could and should be using it to educate K-12 students. Is that a fair assessment?
Is to work with parents so that they can work with their students. Acquiring English is a part of that. Getting to learn how to use computers and cyber issues as well, that's a part of the computer and class. So it's helping the parents so that they can better know what's going on in the classroom with their students. So that's how we can use the title I funds for them. And where to get the parents there, we need childcare, so that's a part of it too. So the people that work in the child part of it also have coordinated with the schools to know what kinds of activities happen in school. And the evenings when the older kids come, they can help them push their homework. So we have an adult available who has at least a two-year degree. So we have them to come, to be able to help the students with their homework. And the kids have access to computers, so if they need to do homework online or type up something, they're there. So would you, do we have a preschool program for those little children that come during the day? Well, it's kind of a preschool. They do preschool-like activities, reading with the teacher and writing and colors and all members.
The family I met essentially felt like it was, so the, and I was absolutely inspired by this family. I met him through work. The 11-year-old daughter is actually in bilingual spectrum. I didn't even know we had that. And the mom is making, is learning English. And the, her four-year-old is going to this, what she called pre-K and just is seeing this great growth. So when you talk about affecting the future success of our students and preparing them for school, this is like the ideal situation in my mind. We're helping the parents so they can help the students. We're providing an opportunity for their other children to receive benefit. And we have the space already that's not in use in the evening to be used. So I'd like, I'd love to see it expand.
I, I had a question, and maybe it's the same one Mr. Christensen had here. I think what, maybe I'm wrong here, but I think what he was asking was if we add additional space, are there additional title I funds where we would be able to pay for the operations and teaching of these parent education courses or would we need to come up with our own funding?
Well, we could, we get an allocation for those title I funds. We just have to take advantage of that allocation we already have.
Are we using our entire allocation on other title I programs or is there a bucket of money that we're not spending?
Well, we try to spend all of the money that we have for that year. So what happens is we've had, a long explanation, but we've had student success funds that come to the priority schools. So they have had some problems spending of all their money because they get the money for the student success and then they get money from the district. So there's been leftover money that we've carried over for the schools and we are allowed 15% carryover. So when we can, we carry over the funds. But it would be nice to be able to expend all of them. So we have that upfront. We said we're going to spend another $100,000 or $60,000 on parent education.
And we, we can't spend that in our buildings that are empty and nice right now?
The other thing I think we could do is, is increase the volunteerism. This is something, we're talking about basic English and basic computer skills that our high school students could volunteer at. I'd like to actually, this kind of appeals to, so I'd love to see our high school students volunteer more. This is a perfect opportunity to provide these, these young people an opportunity to serve. And they're experts at anything technology related and certainly know basic English that they can help teach some of these, these classes and, or be a teacher's aide or whatever it is that they can volunteer as a volunteer.
So I think the thing that we as a board have to know by our next board meeting is are we going to spend the money to purchase this facility? Part of that, how are we going to use it? Because to utilize it for students is going to take $5 million. And right now, we have no commitment from the legislature to fund any of that. As a board, we did set aside seven and a half, we moved seven and a half million dollars from the general fund to the capital fund for a pre-K facility. That money, I believe, is still there. I know we've purchased some property. But I think that's the decision we have to make. If we expend that $5 million on this facility and we get no match from the state, is that the best use of our money? And I think the next part, the super scap, is going to tie into that as well, so.
But let me give one more attempt and make sure I understand this. If we were to move the nine special needs pre-Ks into the building, whether or not the state uses that and unhoused students or not, we would be reducing our unhoused student number because we're taking regular and putting, regular students and putting them backfilling into those nine rooms from other classrooms. So I think it would reduce our number of unhoused students without getting any state matching funds. Does that make sense? If we backfilled what is now pre-K with, with first, second, and third graders, we would be reducing our unhoused students.
Potentially, and we would have to verify that, Scott. The other thing to keep in mind though is the growth chart that we showed you at the beginning because that, each year then for us is always offset by growth. So my guess right now is that it would not significantly impact our, our qualification and percentage for state match, but we can, we can find out more information.
Because we're really talking like 100 students. I don't remember what the exact number was. It's really not, if you look at a district, it's not that, that much of a percentage. The other thing I forgot to mention is the special ed, people said that ideally their facility would have 15 classrooms. So when this, when you said the 12 to 16, and the reason is, is because they would need space for speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy. So an ideal location for all of those programs would be able to have about 15 classrooms. And so this, like, fits exactly that requirement. So those are types of things right now that they're struggling to find space to provide adequately for these special ed children that could then be provided by a facility with these 15 classrooms.
So I, I guess another thing to think about, we, we said that our calculation for this program here would be, for programs like this was 40 unhoused, 40 classrooms of unhoused students based on a certain calculation. If we went and backfilled 10 of those classrooms, you know, it, it does impact calculations. I just don't know how and I would be interested in knowing how it impacts those calculations.
So we're about to talk about the K3 class reduction grant. Those numbers and the snapshot of the qualification for focuses of this grant is fixed, so it would be impactful.
For future, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on with the Washington State class size, K3 class size reduction grant, also known as Super Scap. The, the Senate Bill 6080 is what helped bring this about. It, this grant is a $200 million. It's a competitive grant. The idea is that it's to create classrooms in the state to achieve class size objectives by 2017 and 18. The state set priorities for this competitive grant. The four priorities you see before you, the high ratio of needed classrooms for K3, high student-teacher ratio for K3. you, the high ratio of needed classrooms for K-3, high student-teacher ratio for K-3, high student poverty rate, which would be like based off your free and reduced, and not raised capital funds through bonds or levies in the last 10 years. Those are the scoring mechanisms that they would use to score on a competitive grant. The application process, we've gone through. Pasco School District provided classroom data and submitted the grant application in November of 2015. OSPI required Washington State University to validate those classroom numbers. They came out in December of 2015, walked all the schools, counted the classrooms and the portables. When that was complete, they came back. Pasco School District qualified for 39 additional classrooms to meet and make progress towards class size reduction. Right now, OSPI is currently prioritizing applicants. Right now, the requests are exceeding the applications. They've got well over, last time I talked to them, they had well over 90 and the dollar amount that they would have to go to would more than double the 200 million plus. So to tell you how many, how the volume of applications they have and what the need is out there. Pasco School District, however, in conversations with OSPI, is estimated to be in the top 30% of the applicants. Right now, notification will come after March 1st, 2016. Again, conversations with OSPI look like that would be around mid-March sometime. Once notified, the district has 30 days to submit financial certification and board resolutions. We'll talk about what those are here in just a minute. So how can we use the grant funds? We can use them for new permanent buildings, brick and mortar, add on to an existing building. We can build a modular building. It's required to be on a permanent foundation, no portables. We may construct classrooms at one level to move grades and create K-3 space. Example of that would be adding on to a middle school, moving sixth grade up, and now I have K-3 class size space in the elementary schools again. That's an example of how they would do that. May not purchase or renovate a building, an existing building. So an example of that would be the senior center. We can't buy the senior center and renovate it and say, okay, now we want to, we want to commit these grant funds to that. We wouldn't be allowed to do that. And then also, we need to make progress towards class size reduction in the K-3 area. In the award of the grant, districts must provide a local match. Our percentage of that match, the enhanced funding assistance percentage is different than the traditional SCAP program that we have. This state school construction assistance program is different than the Pasco School District right now, based on the formula state has, would qualify for a 96% match on eligible costs. So the district must provide, and this is that certified cost that we have to provide, 4% on eligible costs and 100% of non-eligible costs. And again, we'll talk about that in just a minute. 30 days to commit to providing funds. It means we need to set that money aside and show them that that's available. The maximum grant calculation example is, and for brick and mortar classrooms, it's $615,000 per classroom. So for our 39 classrooms, the district grant would be $23,985,000. Out of that, the state would provide $23,025,600. Pasco School District then would have to certify, have available for that $959,000 as their portion. Now, that's the district match. The other thing the district, the plus on the other costs on that are that if that money doesn't cover all of the books, all the technology, all of the costs that go into the school, which on 39 classrooms it would not, then the district has to come up with the additional funds to, lack of a better term, furnish that school with all the needs that it would have. That would have to come from the district.
Could we use capital funds for that?
I'd have to check into that. I'd have to check into that and I can do that.
We could use capital funds for that $900,000, whatever, $1,000, right?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was thinking for the additional cost for books and things like that.
Yes, that's what I asked.
Okay. So possible locations for the future elementary school if we were to be awarded the grant? We have five locations, Road 52 and Power Line. We have property at Road 84. We have property at Road 48 and 52. 39 acres at Road 90 and Power Line Road. And then the purchase of the property we just purchased on East Side Pasco at Salt Lake and Utah Avenue. We'd look at where our growth areas are, of course, to meet that need. Right now, we'd be looking probably at the west side for placement of that school.
We begin to do a bit of discussion around Super SCAP. Randy gave you some examples earlier of what a potential grant could look like and I can't emphasize to you enough that that's an example and it's highly unlikely that we're going to get $23 million from the state. Randy has had some offline discussions with staff at OSPI and based on the way that OSPI is processing and prioritizing the grant, like he said, we're in the top, we're around in the top 30%, but we are not at the top of the list. They have 53, I believe, districts who applied and the need is about twice as much as the actual allocation from the state. So the state is grappling with how they deal with that. And if they spread it out equally among the districts, if that's something they decide to do, then our grant allocation would be much smaller. So if we do receive a grant, there will be decisions that we will need to make and we'll have, Randy said, 30 days to make them. If we don't receive a grant, that's probably the easiest in that there is no decision and really, as we look at future facilities planning, we move into the discussion around a potential future bond and we know that we don't have access to those grant funds. If we do get a grant, then we'll need to ask, is it enough to build a school or some other type of facility? If not, then we'd need to think about, well, what else could we possibly do with it? And that would also potentially factor in to discussions about a future bond. If it is enough to build a school, then we would need to talk about design, capacity, cash flow, all of those things. And that would also impact the board's future planning around having capacity to serve students and what you may decide to do in a future bond. So we wanted to make sure that you had information about this program now because any time between March 1 and thereafter, we're going to have a pretty quick turnaround with spring break right in there as well. We're going to have a very quick turnaround to have to make a decision about whether we're going, if we get funds, whether we're going to accept them. So we wanted you to have some information ahead of time and be able to see how this may or may not impact our capacity calculations.
And our new bond as, because if we got something partial, from what I understand, we could probably go and put in half of an elementary school. It would be interesting to, say they give us half, you know, enough for half, can we get state matching on the second half that we need?
It's a great question.
Because otherwise, if we only got enough for half of an elementary school, isn't that almost what the state pays us right now when we go to an elementary school?
About half.
And don't they pay us about half?
What, is that not right?
A little bit less. So, yeah, I guess, I guess we have a lot to learn still.
Well, and the state, we do too, Amy, because the state is very much with this particular program, building the plane as they're flying it. They do not have the regulations, or rather, the structure right now for how they're going to allocate the grants or the conditions they're going to put on districts. They're developing that right now. So new information is coming in on a fairly frequent basis.
But the thing is, this isn't really going to help us alleviate problems in our school because we need more classrooms and all this is alleviating is making the classrooms smaller. It's not giving us any extra classrooms. It's simply making class sizes smaller.
So the third, yes, so the 39 rooms was calculated based on a multiplier of 17 students per classroom, 15 students per classroom for buildings in high poverty. The requirement is that we make progress towards that class size, but it wouldn't necessarily be required that we achieve it because I think they realize that we don't have control necessarily. We might say with our numbers one year, hey, we can build 39 classrooms and have K-3 be at 17 and then have 400 more students show up the next year than had been forecast and we have to serve those kids. We can't say to them, no, you can't go to that school because it was built with Super SCAP funds. So we've got some flexibility in the numbers to be able to accommodate growth.
I think it does, I mean, it does help with our crowding, you know, it'll make, when you redo the boundaries, it'll make the schools that are impacted have smaller people, or smaller numbers of students utilizing those common spaces and the crowding you're seeing. So it doesn't help with growth in the district as far as the number of new students coming in, but it eases the crowded, the crowded situation at some schools.
So the good news is we qualify for 39 classrooms if it all comes out. The challenge is it's got to be K-3 classrooms. They're not going to allow you to build K-6 classrooms unless, not that you can't use them for K-6, but you have to be freeing up space somewhere else that's K-3. So it, which we would obviously, if we build a new building, it would be K-6.
Or we could build, but we could build a junior high and it would, and pull the sixth grade back in and it would free up all that room for K-3 in elementary schools.
So the other challenge to this too is that you have to have the money right now. This can't be dependent on a future bond that you're going to pass.
Oh, really?
So that's the kicker of this. That's, so it's a heck of a match.
So that might impact whether or not we buy this property and renovate it if we're going to have to put money into an elementary school.
So that's one of the, one of the pieces that they're still working out because I think the point that Mr. Christensen made is going to be very difficult for districts to be able to manage. Districts who have not been able to raise the capital funds to build a building on their own somehow are going to be expected to pay for construction as it's going and get reimbursed by the state. There's a piece of that that, you know, to me just does not make sense. So I don't know if what you said, Steve, is set in stone or not. That is our understanding though, as well, as far as what their current thinking is on how that would work. That could change. But we have started to talk with Howard about what our options are if we did have to have cash available to be able to provide funding, if we went with some type of non-voted debt, which would not be a risk because we'd know what grant, that we'd be getting the reimbursement, that would probably be the way we'd need to do it.
It really sounds like there's so much up in the air, you know, I'm not going to, the last person I want to trust is the politicians or legislator, but let's say overly optimistically, we would get, say, $10 million and then we could decide, we would combine $10 million of our capital funds and we could say that $10 million is going to build the K-3 part of the school and our $10 million is going to build the 4-6. I mean, to me, they're going to be really flexible in what you do, but I don't know. You never know. I think the one question that I have that we may need to do is with the senior center issue and the contingency expiring March 15th, it seems like we're going to be running tight with this and we may want some more information on this. I'm wondering if we're able to extend that contingency two weeks or a month or just so that we have the time to get some more information on this before we decide to expend $5 million of our capital funds money towards the senior center before we know exactly kind of how this is playing out.
Probably not because this is actually, we're in an extension right now already. We've asked them for an extension of time to be able to make a decision. We can revisit that with the city, though.
Yeah, it's either extending or ending circumstances. I'm sure they could at least consider it, you know, with this, but.
Well, we for sure know by March 1st. I mean, knowing how Olympia works, couldn't they push that out?
After March 1st.
Sometime after March 1st. So we have no idea if we're going to get this information in time to whether or not. So will Howard get, be able to get us some information on what cash we have available in order to put toward a project like this if needs be?
If we're awarded the grant, I think our next step would be to schedule a meeting with you and work out those scenarios and bring that information to you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
So I think one of the things that would be helpful is what, what kind of money do we have in our capital fund right now? I know, I would expect there's some in there because we're, I would hope it's not zero because we do have to buy property when it's available and hopefully there would be funds available in there.
Sure.
But it would be nice to know how much is in there, what it's designated for and if it could be freed up to do something like this or the senior center or purchase property. I think those are going to be the primary things without a bond.
So the actual, if we just purchased it, it's, what is it, 1.3? If we just actually purchased that?
Correct. And we could, and then we could lease it back if we?
Yeah, so it's 1.342 if I just purchased it.
Yeah, I'm not sure the, I mean, the thing you don't want to do is buy the building and have it sit vacant.
Right.
If you purchase it.
But then lease it back.
Yeah, now, I'm not sure the city's going to want to sell us the building and lease it back. It might be one of these leases where it's, you know, a dollar a year or something like that. Just, it's to our benefit if we purchase it for them to keep it vacant, occupied.
So have we already put, is this just an option that we've come up with or have we had approached the city and asked, would you be willing to pay X to lease it back?
I don't believe we've talked about costs as far as the lease costs, but they are, they would be potentially interested in some type of a lease arrangement. I think part of the uncertainty right now is not knowing how much time they would need to be in the building because they can't, they can't move forward with their plans for their future, meaning the future needs of the seniors until they know that they're going to sell the building. And so they're going to need a period of time and that has been built into the purchase and sale agreement where they would retain occupancy of the facility. They can't shut the facility down, not have an option for, for their seniors. And I think that there are some emerging option, excuse me, emerging options at the city level as well. So that is something that we've talked with them about, its potential.
Okay. I still would really like the information on the preschool. Is that going to be difficult to do, finding kids that have been through preschool and haven't been through preschool and where they're at?
So Amy, Tracy Wilson and her staff is working on putting that together.
Great.
It's in the review process right now, so once we get a review, it's accuracy we can give to you if they are working.
Okay, is that just going to be for kindergarten or is it going to go out to third grade as far as we can to see if those, if that's still?
I can't remember off the top of my head what the data looks like exactly, but we'll provide as much longitude and length as we can.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? If you think of other information, excuse me, that you'd like from us, that you'd like us to provide, some of what you've talked about tonight, we've got on deck for the next meeting or the meeting after that and other pieces we'll get to you as well. Thank you.
So I think this has been asked before, but if we purchase this facility, can we get any match money? Is there a program, if we purchase a senior center, any match money to renovate that and use it, whether we use it for special ed, pre-K or?
I asked that specific question and the answer was no.
Okay.
And from what I understand, we cannot put like K-3 kindergarten center, that can't be used for that or it can?
We'd need to look at a design for that, Amy, but I think the, the feeling of our group is no because the site is so small and there really is not enough space to put a playground, the type of playground you would need to accommodate bigger kids who would need a bigger toy and that type of thing. That's primarily why we're looking at it as potential for pre-K.
Okay, thanks.
So I think one other thing to keep in mind too, we had this legislative ask this session for two and a half million dollars. this session for two and a half million dollars. It's possible that we could get a fraction of that. Don't know how much. Probably not going to get the whole thing this year. If we get anything, it would be less than the whole thing. We certainly have the option of going back in next session and asking for the balance of the two and a half million dollars. So that could help offset some of the cost. We'll know, in fact, I think tomorrow the capital budget comes out for the House. So we'll know if we're in one of the budgets fairly soon. So we'll have some of that information next, by next meeting. But that's another thing to keep in mind too. On this, on this senior center, we are asking for funds from the legislature out of their capital budget to help with that. So, but this is the short session, capital budget this year is very small and so there is some potential there.
I would, I'm not telling that even next year because the, the super scap money that they had, they estimate that $200 million. Now they're saying it'd be $400. So I, I just seriously doubt they're going to, in addition to that, say that, well, we'll give you extra money too, even though, you know, we don't have half of what we would need to approve all the grants that we're already processing for this program that we've already decided that we're going to do. I just have a really hard time thinking that they're going to just say, well, Pasco, well, even though that money's, we don't have the money for this program we're doing, we're going to just give you money to do something different. But it's possible.
Well, believe it or not, it happens all the time. On the, on the main session, they, they give away hundreds of millions of dollars in capital money and those, a school district. Last session got two and a half million dollars for early learning centers. So it's not unprecedented.
That was last session and we didn't get any?
Last session. Well, they got two and a half. We were asking for seven and a half. Yeah. So, I mean, you, yeah. I mean, there's not a lot of money out there. That, that's for sure. State budgets are tight and especially with the demand on education at this point, state money, it's, it's even tighter. So.
Well, thank you for this information. It'll help us with some big decisions that we have in the near future here and some exciting possibilities that we have too. So thank you for that background and I'm sure we'll have more questions in the next few weeks.
Thank you.